And how many did you poll? Who did you talk to? And did you ask them what their opinion was before you voted on this? And I think that, I think that you, you need to think about your feelings, maybe how you feel for something. Yes, I know you're representing the body of people, but in that sense too, you have to take into consideration that sometimes just what you have to feel about it isn't necessarily the way everybody else feels about it. And you might think that it was real easy to slough that off under the rug without, you know, giving anybody an opportunity to say how they felt about it, or either way, either for it or for against it. I don't think that the opportunity was given there. And I would hope that, that they, the council could see that there is a community involvement, and I, and not just for the people that are here tonight that are better and supportive of the, of the trail. And maybe some, maybe some modifications do need to be made on the trail. Maybe it doesn't have to be cement. And who are they that said we have to have it as cement? I see the other parts of the trail are not cement. So, I mean, why does Osage City have to have the only piece that's cemented? I don't know if it isn't.
The state required it.
Is it? The state required it?
Please, please, let Nancy talk.
But, you know, I just wondered if there's some way that that could be gotten around and it could be a trail. And I also wondered if any of them, anybody on the council has walked the trail that has been put in in Melbourne, or gone down to see the trail that's Melbourne, Melbourne has. Much smaller town than we are, but they think that in the future, that it's going to be something that's going to be an enhancement to them. And I also feel like it's probably not going to benefit me. Take a look at me and you'll see that I'm not a walker, but you know, it doesn't mean that our children or our grandchildren or the future generations that are going to be in Osage City would not be able to use that trail for other things, you know, for family and for, I think it could be an attractive thing that could invite bike riders or horseback riders, you know, into our community. So, I would think that if there was a way for the council to at least table that situation or go back and address that situation to see whether or not, to take a really good look at it, to see whether or not people in our, in our town are really that much set against it. And yes, I know it's a lot of money, and I don't have a lot of money, but I know that it takes money to do those things. But I also know that we're throwing some money away. And as I talked to somebody, it's like making a car payment, and you have 50 payments to make, and you made the 49th payment, and then you decide you don't want the car. So, you're just like going to take it back and let the, let the car dealership have it back because you don't want to make that last payment. So, I thank you for your comments.
Thank you. I think you were next. Please.
My name is Mark Ballinger, living in Osage on 7th Street. My company is at just about 7th. It's basically a community-wide thing involving parents and people. And that came about because of a lot of different things, the trail, but I see other things in the town that are falling apart, the tennis courts. I mean, that was the thing that helped us make a decision to move here 11 years ago, 12 years ago. They were beautiful. And we got a new pool, beautiful. The tennis courts are hardly playable anymore. And trust me, I'm conservative, fiscal, social, whatever, but I understand the money thing. But I also understand the communities die and you don't take care of them. There's an attractiveness to what we had started here and little bits and pieces of it. You guys were letting go. I don't even like going home. My street is horrendous, and Mr. Smith is right. It wasn't always fault. It was poorly reconstructed after they put in the new water line, '05, or somewhere in there. I don't know if it's underlaying, foundation, I don't know what problem it was. But the traffic that ensued after that caused whatever problem it was to be exacerbated. It was little things that didn't work. There were asphalt treatments in patches that went to gravel that continue to be gravel. And I'm a capitalist too, Mr. Smith. I understand your plight and I wish your business well, but I do not want these trucks going down my street. There's only one house on that street that's not have kids. One. Now two.
One more.
You did. So, I mean, if you're going to revisit the route, revisit it somewhere else, but I do want my street fixed, please. Spend more time.
Thank you, Mark. Who's next? Yes, yes, sir.
Bob Remus is my name. I, 2017 Street, 504 South. So, I echo a little bit about what Mark said. I think we do have a larger concern beyond my street, which I'm very concerned about, and that is our community. And money's tied and the jurisdictions have to be made, but we need to invest in our community. I too moved here 12, 13, maybe 14 years ago, primarily for that reason. This was a progressive community, I thought, and that's why we chose, including all the towns in the community. That's why we chose to live here. I respect Mr. Smith's right to run his business, and absolutely, but I want my street fixed. A lot of houses that with, that was on a nice paved road, and we'd like to continue to have a house on a nice paved road. And the truck route is certainly a relatable issue, and, but I think what I want is I want my street fixed, and I'd like to limit a segment of my years to encourage you to support that.
Thank you. Who else would like to make a comment? Yes, Alice?
I'm Alice Robertson. I live at 114 South 7th. And I've lived there 12 years, 12 gone, 13 years. Some years back, they resurfaced the street, and since that time, I've seen the truck traffic gradually tear the street up, and it just got worse and worse, and the trucks just kept going and making it worse and worse. And from what I've read in the paper, and somebody from the street department came by the house and talked about, and said that the meeting tonight was going to, the topic was going to be brought up, and, and it was, they were going to determine whether it was going to be approved to do the street over or not. And they had the plans kind of made for what needs to be done, and then found out that the sewer line underneath needs to be replaced. And, I mean, I understand that truck route maybe made it make a little more money going that way, but this is costing the city a terrible lot of money. And it has to be done because, I mean, it's just really a bad thing for Osage City to have a street like that. And anyone that has a house on it needs, you know, if they ever want to resell the house, nobody's going to buy the house if the street's in pretty bad condition. And I just, I think this needs to be done. And I, I live in the middle of the street, and so, and there's a lot of dust. My porch just gets dusty all the time from dust from the streets. It's in such bad shape, so I'm hoping.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. Who else would like, yes, ma'am?
My name's Kristy Gant, and I live at 528 South 7th. We've lived here for, moved here in '07, and obviously, as my neighbors have said, we've seen our street come into bad, bad shape. It was fixed a year or two ago, the fourhouse sections that had buckled up and were, I mean, dangerous, outright dangerous, and put gravel into fill them, which helped the problem, but now we have a gravel street in town, and it's really not acceptable to have a gravel street in town. I have a six-year-old daughter who can't ride her bike and is scared to ride her bike because she has nowhere to go. We have no suitable sidewalks on our street, and we have no suitable streets, so she has nowhere to ride her bike. So, I just want you guys to think about the people who live on this street, have the ones every day, and it goes to those tonight.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to make a comment tonight? Billy, while we're talking about? Can you stand up and introduce yourself?
I'm my wife. I live on 105 Fourth Third. So far, we're talking about roads. My road's very good, and it goes straight up to the elevator, but there's no truck route sign on my block, and my road is very good. But one block east of my house, right next to the car dealership, there's a big sign that says "truck route." The cars, the trucks will come from the east and the west both, but they use my road. I'd just like to know what the truck route's for.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have a comment they'd like to make? I think, well, Ernie, hold on a second. I think, go ahead.
Cheryl Balliard. I live at 1344 C Street, and I just wanted to be brought up to date as to what the $1 million from KDOT is actually going to do for rails, trails. Was that for upkeep and maintaining it once we did our part, or was it to help after we spent like the $400,000?
I'll take a stab at it, Cheryl. I mean, the way I understand, essentially, the way the grant was set up.
Okay, Duane, Duane, we're going to let one person talk at a time, and it's going to be Lauren right now, okay?
So, the way that the grant was set up through KDOT was essentially, the city is responsible for all the preliminary engineering, surveying, and all that, which is the expense we've had to date, plus the cost from, so that $289,000 included all that expense. But as far as the grant itself was, was concerned, the tax property is not a part of that. That's completely separate. So, the money for surveying, engineering, we were responsible for. Once it actually went to bid in construction, then it kicked in at an 80/20 match. In order for us to get the full $2 million, or full million-dollar benefit, if you could do the math on it, roughly a $200,000-ish bill over that spend, for our 20% portion, the 80% portion from the state would be a million dollars. If we only spent an additional $50,000, then the, for sake of argument, or say $20,000, if we spent $20,000, the state match would only be $80,000. So, the way that 80/20 match works is applied to how much we spent on the construction of the project. We may or may not have used that full million dollars from KDOT, but there is nothing past the construction of the project, $1 million of that was, that may fair.
Okay. Today, we're at the point where we're ready. The plans are about 99% completed. They could, it could be to bid, if you got a startup, probably within a month, we could bid. You know, at that point, once you start the bid process, then it does kick in 80/20 for the project. There are several alternatives. The one that we're looking at, and the council talked about, and prior councils, is looking at making 17th, 13th Street limestone screening path, because there's just not enough people out there to constitute having a full concrete surface. But once 13th kicks in, then you start getting into all the housing, where everybody starts really walking down Lang Street. And that would be a 10-foot-wide concrete path from 13th Street to 9th Street, and it'd be a six-foot path because of right-of-way concerns from the railroad corridor to the south side of Lake. And that was the basic, that was the bare bones minimum that we could do to receive funding from KDOT. The project had, is anticipated being worth $85,000 to $100,000, which includes a 15% contingency built in for our portion of that. Also includes construction inspections, so on and so forth. It was just one alternative, but there's another alternative. You can look at making a whole trail concrete. There's so many different options that have been thrown around, that the bare bones minimum to receive the funding would be from 17th Street to that connection on Lake. Because the original intent of the grant was to provide an accessible route from those individuals who live in those towns to actually give back to our sidewalk again. And so, that's why the grant was even, I think, went after back in 2000. But we reduced the scope of it significantly. We added a lot of different options to the trail to reduce the, the overall cost of the project, and that's kind of where it's at today.
And for Duane, I just have one more comment. Our household was not polled prior to vote at the last city council meeting. Okay, thank you. Ernie, I believe you were up next.
Ernie Johnson. I may not have the right to speak here because I live outside the city, but I've been around here for 76 years, plus four military, and I've been around here all my life. And I'm familiar with a lot of things involved in the federal government. And we're probably looking at the wrong side of the coin for you people, but does anybody have a concrete figure on what this will cost you as Osage City? Bearing in mind, your population is what, 2,800 to 3,000, somewhere? Take all the kids out, take all the people who are on welfare, take all the people who are not really taxpayers, and you're going to wind up with about 1,200 people probably, to 1,500 at most, to pay these taxes. I would warn you to jump into a contract to finish something you don't know what it is. I mean, this is going in the dark, pushing in the dark, until you know a concrete figure. The federal government's middle name is cost overrun. And when you stop to think of all the people that's going to pay for this, it starts getting mighty small. And you need to think about that. We're not in utopia today. We're in the gutter today in this country, and you need to think about that too. But there's something that's even more important than all of that put together, and that is, when the federal government and the state government gets into your property, if you do not have a contract of time, it goes on to perpetuity. Now, if somebody goes down with the right-of-way, I didn't say they own the property, right-of-way down to where you are, and it's the federal government, and you want to do anything, change a pipe, change a power pole, change anything, you're going to have to set up a set of prints that's going to satisfy the federal government. I don't mean somebody with just a scratching, chicken scratching deal. I'm talking about somebody who knows what they're doing, costs money, and you want to tell them what you want to do, so you have to have prints, you have to have specs, and those specs will have to specify everything in detail, in size, length, width, measurements, color, everything, to satisfy the federal government. And then, you will probably wait three or four years before you can change that pipe because they'll have it there, and when they get good and ready, then they'll drop it back in your lap and approve or disapprove. What I'm saying is, basically, usually you lose your sovereignty. If you don't believe that, you jump out on the trail and follow that. The trail was taken over in 1886 by the Osage, Council Grove, and Ottawa Railroad. My great-grandfather sold part of it to the right-of-way, not dying. The State of Kansas 66-525 adds an ation, states that when upon a rock, of the killing a railroad track, abandoning it, which has to be a formal action, this right-of-way dissolves and the property reverts back to the original landowner that's here, no matter who it is and how many years. The federal government, they call it preempting, but they strong-arm, and it's tough, with the Rail Bank Act of 1979. About four years later, they decide they're going to have to do something with that thing because there's a lot of people dumping trash, there's a lot of brush, a lot of weed growing up, so they decided to have some trails. If that land were to revert it to the farmers or whoever, cities or whatever, it would have went on the tax roll. But now, it's off the tax roll, and so, that's taken off taxation from the states and so on. But when you deal with the federal government, you want to have some kind of time limit on what you have, because if you don't, it's perpetuity, and you have lost your sovereignty forever. And that's something to think about, because when you want to do something, you have to get their permission. And something you can run out and do in a couple of days' time, might take you five years. Just warning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. Catherine, can we let everybody who hasn't spoken that wants to first?
Just one quickie. Does this land then become the federal government's land? Is it the federal government's land?
It's not the land, but the right-of-way is.
The right-of-way, but is, isn't it the right-of-way, the federal government's?
Exactly. The rail's across conservancies through the law.
The rails-to-trails conservancy has the deeded right-of-way, but how it works under that act is that the, it can be reclaimed for future rail use. So, it's not, it was not abandoned, and, you know, it went into that process when the line stopped running, and then because of the Rail Bank Act, it becomes available for development as a trail. And yes, we have, and we have the deed for that right-of-way at the present time. So, you've got the right-of-way from the federal government? Correct.
Okay. Who hasn't spoken that wants to speak? Darlene, did you want to before you started to say something about walking the trails? If so, stand up and introduce yourself, please.
I'm Darlene Channell. I live at 327 Lake and Street. I'm, I'm mainly here to find out what's going on at city council, but now I have a lot of things I want to talk about. First, about the truck track routes, and then about the trails-to-rails. My main concern is, maybe it's great. I'm, I'm only going to live probably another 10, 15, 20 years. I'm not looking for 30. But basically, there's not that, that many people in town that walks. Now, I hear people say, this lady lives on North Fourth Street, and I don't know, I've never seen her walk down my street. I live on the corner of Fourth Street. I mean, why would these people? I lived in Dogtown all my life. I grew up. I walked as a kid. I walked on the blacktop. I still walk on the blacktop because there's no ditch and sidewalks, no sage to walk on. Now, back to the trails, or back to the trucks. I don't understand the trails-to-rails, where are they? They're coming down Jerry's, they're going down Holiday, and they're going to the depot. Is that it? Then they go from the depot, back to Holiday, back to Jerry's, back to the airport? Is that it? Or do they go further, from the depot to, what is it, Martin Street? And my main concern is, I want to know where they're coming, because if they're going to come down Lake and Street, God help them, because I live on Lake and Street. 3:30 in the morning, I have gears shifting. I have motors and gears shifting all day long. I have tractors, I have ambulance, I have sirens, I have cops, I have farmers, I have business people. They drive about semi-mile an hour on Lake and Street. We even ask the cop to sit on our street and run radar. And from my yard, I've got posts because I'm scared to go out and mow my yard. Okay, now, we's going down here on Lake and Street. Okay, so that's a truck route. Okay, if they're going to walk down Lake and Street, they're going to have the ambulance, they're going to have the cops, they're going to have the trucks, they're going to have absolutely everything. So, I want to know where this trail's supposed to stop after it gets to the airport, or depot. Does it go back the same route, or does it go on further west?
Thank you. Thanks, Darlene. I think Nick kind of addressed earlier the main portion of, of the trail that's proposed right now, and that there's.
He said some of that Lake and Street, but it didn't.
Since tree phases, you want to just hit what happens with just Lake, Nick, from 9th Street to Lake.
Actually, you only cross Lake and at two points. You'll cross Lake and at, um, Lake and at 9th, and then you'll cross it at Lake and at 5th Street, and there'll be two pedestrian crossings. The traffic will never be caught in Lake and itself.
Okay, I'm going to ask pedestrian crossings. Now, what's going to block these pedestrian crossings? I mean, I walk four to 12 miles every day, and I see very few people walking, but where I'm getting at, somebody's got to cross these roads, and these crosswalks don't work. You can't even get anybody to stop in the crosswalks in town, and I don't care if it's the law or if it's their business. There's only one truck in town that'll stop for me to, and that's a swans man. I stood out in the street on Market Street, and I stopped so the kids could cross Market Street to go to school. So, address that when you're doing your trails, please. Crosswalks, spike signs on a road don't work.
Okay. Thank you, Darlene. Who else would like to speak that hasn't spoken yet tonight? Yes, yes, sir?
Rowan Mockamore. I live south of town. My family's been around here for 132 years. Maybe I ain't got no business to speak like Ernie. I don't live in town, but I want to tell you guys something. You ought to have a sidewalk out here. I don't know how many times I've damn near run over people at 10 o'clock at night, and you know it too. When somebody dies, somebody's going to be responsible, because somebody's going to get run over. I don't know how many times, last winter, I've noticed a gentleman with a little stroller, with a little baby, 10 o'clock at night, going in the snow along that street with trucks and traffic going. So, I'd be thinking about a sidewalk instead of that plaything up north. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mockamore. Anyone else like to address the council?
I've got a.
Oh, whoop, whoop, got it. Okay, go ahead. Your, your five minutes are, are still going. Go ahead. You can rest.
From the dollar store clan in the south end on the west side, nice sidewalk. How can they afford it?
Okay, thank you, sir. Who else? Anyone else like to address the council this evening? That hasn't? Any questions from the council?
Nick, the only question I would have at this point, Doctor, because obviously, you have several contingencies that kind of pared this thing back over time from its initial grand sale, $1.69 million, that was on the table originally, and pared back substantially since then. Is there opportunity to do that further or not? And I apologize because I was unable to be at the last meeting.
You can't go any further down in the base bid. You could probably go from an eight-foot sidewalk to a 10-foot concrete sidewalk on the portion that runs the railroad right-of-way from 13th to 9th. The reason why they.
Say that again, Nick, because you went from eight foot to 10.
Sorry. There's, it's designed for a 10-foot-wide concrete path from 13th Street to 9th.
Please, please, sir, Mr. Mockamore, if you could let, let Mr. Hernandez talk, please.
You could go down to about eight foot, but it needs to be concrete because of ADA concerns.
And that was the primary, that was the piece behind the grant that got transferred.
Yes, it is. The, the connection from Dogtown to the existing sidewalk, that's already in place on 9th and Lake and Street on the south side. That's really what got the grant for us. That's the thing.
Just doing it back as far as we can at this point.
We've probably taken off probably $300,000 or $400,000 worth of added cost for that portion. We took out landscape, we took out lighting, we took out a parking area that would have required us to buy more property. We took out a lot of excess. We actually got them to agree to also allow us to have limestone from 13th to 17th Street when initially they wanted concrete for the entire trail in order to receive those funds, but we were able to get all that changed, and it's dropped the price essentially from, you know, potentially $200,000 cost share for that portion down to just about $85,000.
Okay. I think that Mr. Barrett's had a question for you, Nick.
Yeah, Nick, you said that they was going to redo the highway east of town, and we was going to put in for sidewalks down along what they call Lang Street from Casey's east to the edge of town. Well, that take care of our sidewalks, we don't need cement there. If they put limestone down, wouldn't that work? Put limestone on an entire thing? It'd be a lot cheaper. Lee, what I said, you could do, how much mile?
Oh, I think for, uh, I don't have it top of my head, but I'm sure for $10,000 a mile, you can, you can have it all done.
That seems a lot more sensible to me than around $400,000.
$400,000 would be for the retired link from 17th clear to Martin, clear on the other side of Martin Street, and that include the sidewalk that would go to the school and then back up 5th Street back to the railroad right-of-way.
But you're going, if you're going through to Martin, how you going to cross Burlington, Northern Santa Fe?
Which was after. It's designed in 10 years. I mean, that's seriously, that's.
It has been solved.
It has?
It's not that cheap solve.
No. Because they have to do the work themselves, but it's already figured into the cost of the project.
I've, I've been sitting here, and I think I've been paying attention. I don't know if anybody's seen me sleeping or not, but I've only got one thing to say. I think a lot of people that are concerned about this trail, we got the idea that being, if it was voted down, there would not be a trail, but there will be a trail. There will be a walking trail. When the Kansas Rails Trails gets enough people that are so concerned about the trail, they can volunteer to these people and help them get this progress in from Highway 75 to Osage City. If you want a walking trail, the best thing I can say, without us spending thousands of dollars, is to get a little exercise and talk to these people and go out and help them cut a little brush, spray a few weeds, pull weed, and then they can get somebody, and they can get this screenings or whatever they want to put on it in Osage City. And man, you can ride through on, over the new bridge on 75, you can go through on past Dasher, probably three, four miles. And then another few years, they're working from the west coming into Osage City, you can go clear to Council Grove. So, basically, all I feel we're arguing about is a lot of money for a little bit of concrete. So basically, all I feel we're arguing about is a lot of money for a little bit of concrete. And, that's all I can say.
Thanks, Lee. Is anybody that hasn't addressed the council that wants to? Because it's, we're over an hour now. A few minutes, just, we'll hit all three of you very quickly, okay?
I just had a question. Does any of this future plans that they had, are they going to address the water problem like where Sonic is on Langen Street, where the new Buzzards is, where there's a swamp if we get an inch of rain and it goes over the road there? Is that problem gonna be addressed when they, or was it gonna be addressed when they did either one of these projects? Or?
I believe the answer to that question is, anything now on drainage, we will have to work with Rails Conservancy and- I mean, in terms of, if we have to do something, we have drainage problem on the east part, or on the, yeah, east part.
Dogtown.
So, if we wanna go under the trail and retain, do a bunch of drainage work, I would assume we'd have to work with you guys a little bit.
I would assume, so I was just gonna say, I don't think that the trail itself has a drainage problem or is created.
No, no, no.
Okay, you're talking about what is to resolve?
Sonic couldn't do Buzzards, that's not-
Sonic, Buzzards- This is being addressed by a general issue, they're taking care of the drainage. They're not complete with what they're doing there out there. They, they need to do some more work on their end before we'll sign off on them being done. So they have a lot of drainage work to do and they know it. And they're in the process of getting it fixed. Sonic can, has two options. They can either dig a ditch, but we actually designed into the plans a stormwater inlet so it would take care of all of that drainage in there. It actually put a curb and gutter along there to help build up a few of that side of the road as well. And so you'd actually have a stormwater inlet there. Now it's actually partially paid for by Sonic because they agreed to pay for part of that funding and then it worked to drain the property. Because there's only six inches of fall from that, from Langen Street to the other stormwater inlet, which is clear on the northeast side of Sonic's property. So there's not much fall.
Okay, thanks, Nick. Ernie, very briefly.
Well, what I'm wondering, when I was here about, I don't know, two, three years ago, and they projected on that wall over there, the pictures of what they're going to do, and people said that they projected there would be seven to ten thousand people coming into Osage City per year. And I just can't hardly believe that. But, what I would think is, if I were a merchant here, and I'm going to put in a lot of money on this thing because I'm on its property and so on, I would question, what all is this going to benefit us? Beyond the trail that he's talking about, there's gonna be a trail out here. But beyond that, the ones coming into Osage City, that's what I'm talking about. What is that going to benefit him or anyone else? Well, let me paint a mental image for you.
Quickly.
A guy on a bicycle-
Paint it quickly, Ernie.
A bicycle, and he's gonna take a piano and a divan home with him. And a guy with a backpack, he's gonna have a freezer and refrigerator too. These people are gonna come in here and they're gonna need to fill their water bottles and they may eat something. And they're going to go to the bathroom and use your restrooms and your paper and your napkin towels and all that. And then they're gonna go on the bicycle later on, after they're around, they're gonna go. What that worth?
Okay, thank you. Catherine?
This is such a huge thing. The Rails to Trails, yes. But with the pro, with the plans and designs that you have, it takes care of drainage issues also, I understand. We also get much-needed sidewalks.